I want to thank God for this empowered nations church. I thank my brother Pastor Reggie Thomas, who is not here with us at this point of time. But thank God for that man of God. Thank you Pastor Joshua. Thank you to Pastor Jolyn is here. And I want to thank everyone who is here. I met quite a few of our friends and elderly folks from my hometown. I was surprised to see them here. From my very childhood, I've been meeting with quite a few people. And such a joy to see all of them back here again after a very, very long time. And all the precious men of God, thank you for making me feel so much at home in this place. Like to quickly turn our attention to the book of Saint Luke, chapter number 11. As I'm going to think about being empowered by the Holy Spirit. We'd like to go from the very basics. But for our meditation tonight, I'd like to turn to the book of the Gospel according to Luke, chapter number 11 and verse number 11, 12, and 13. Let me read it for you. It goes like this in the Amplified Bible. It says, "What father among you? If his son asks for a loaf of bread, will give him a stone? Or if he asks for a fish, will instead of a fish, give him a serpent? Or if he asks for an egg, will he give him a scorpion?" Verse number 13. "If you then, evil as you are, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will your heavenly Father give the Holy Spirit to those who ask?" And the Amplified Bible goes on to say, "And continue to ask him." Not just those who ask, but continue to ask him. It's a fabulous scripture portion teaching about the Holy Spirit. And that's straight from our Lord Jesus Christ. The Lord Jesus Christ is teaching about how we must be living a spirit-led life and that with the power of the Holy Spirit. Now, before we get into the scriptures, I would like to say something that the Lord has been placing on my heart. I sense in my spirit that the time is ripe, that the Lord is giving His word into the hand of some people so that the dominion in this land will be taken over by the church. I repeat that because I was just asking the Lord what's happening in the spirit realm. And I sense very strongly that there is a fight going on to have the dominion of the spirit realm. And I sense that the Lord will hand over the word of the spirit. And that will be a powerful, powerful dominion that we will hand over, that we'll have over the land. When we speak, things will start to happen. I believe that even sicknesses will have to leave the land. I think so many things will have to move, to make space, make way so much so that we will have dominion over the land. It's a very clear thing that I sense. And I pray that by the time we are done with this sermon from the scriptures and by the time we start to pray, I believe that we will have come a long way where this one, I would think it's a prophetical sentence, nothing less than that, in that some of us will have the gift of the Holy Spirit in a large extent. All right, so coming back to the scriptures. It goes on to say like this, "If you then, being evil," that's talking about men, "know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will the heavenly Father give the Holy Spirit to them who ask?" Now, when the Lord Jesus Christ starts to talk about the Holy Spirit, starts to teach about the Holy Spirit, why does He want to take a bread, a loaf of bread as a reference point? He could have done so many other things. You know, I was thinking in my imagination, while He was trying to teach the people about the Holy Spirit, He could have just told, hey, if your child comes and asks you for, let's say, a toy, and then will you give your child a broken old toy? Hey, if you guys don't give your children used old broken toys, but you know how to give new good toys to your children, how much more will the heavenly Father? He didn't say, He didn't bring in a toy into the picture? Or maybe He could have used an illustration and said, "If your child comes and asks you for a dress, tomorrow it's my birthday, I need a dress. Will you give our old torn used clothes?" No, you're not going to do that. You're going to give a brand-new dress to your child. If you then, being evil, know how to give new dress or new toys to your children, the Lord Jesus does not bring toys or dress or any other concept when the Lord Jesus is teaching about the Holy Spirit. The question then is, why is the Lord Jesus bringing? And the master teacher, when He brings in a teaching about the Holy Spirit, why does He bring in a bread into picture? Why does He bring in a loaf of bread? Very simply, a couple of things that the Lord Jesus is trying to highlight from this one teaching is, number one, just like a child would need bread on a daily basis, we need the Holy Spirit on a daily basis. Well, for some of us, we've been so theologically conditioned that we find it very difficult to buy into this one idea. We are like, whoa, you know what? Way long ago, I've been redeemed by the blood of the Lamb. Yes, we are. And I've been filled with the Holy Spirit. Yes, we are. So when I'm already redeemed by the blood of the Lamb, and I'm filled by the Holy Spirit, I have the gift of the Holy Spirit, why would I need the Holy Spirit on a daily basis? Well, if time permits, by the end of this, maybe at least halfway through the sermon, I might want to even try and help understand the different perspectives of how the Holy Spirit is taught to us in the Holy Scriptures. On the one hand, going from the Old Testament, we find the Holy Spirit represented as wind, as the river, where we go into the ankles, then to the knees, then up to the waist, and then we go into swimming, the river of the Holy Spirit. Then we have the flames of the Holy Spirit, the fire of the Holy Spirit, the cloven tongues, the Holy Spirit that comes in as the cloven tongues. So many things where it's not a personal personality or a personhood of the Holy Spirit, but certain aspects of the Holy Spirit that seem to us like very impersonal things in this scripture portion, like a loaf of bread. And at the same time, as we grow deeper into the things of the spirit, the Lord Jesus himself said, hey, when He comes, the Holy Spirit is portrayed as a person. And going deeper into the aspect, the Bible says, "You need to have the coinonia of the Holy Spirit, the fellowship of the Holy Spirit." I don't know how far we will come into that, but I would like to slowly start off from this scripture portion. The Lord Jesus says, "If you want to live the fullness of your Christian life, you have to understand, just like a child needs bread on a daily basis, you need the Holy Spirit and that on a daily basis." Hallelujah. Sometimes it questions us because we are not come to a place where we can still accept the need of the Holy Spirit and asking on a daily basis. So from these words, a couple of things that I want to bring to your notice. Number one, maybe even before we come to verse number 13, it says, "If he asks for a loaf of bread, will he give him a stone?" In fact, what is needed for energy. Number two, it says, "If he asks for a fish, will instead of a fish, give him a serpent?" You know, a fish has a deeper aspect than just a loaf of bread, more than just energy. It comes to nourishment. And then verse number 12, it goes on to say, "If he asks for an egg, will he give him a scorpion?" An egg would, you know, egg has everything that a small chicken would need as it comes out of the eggshell. Everything that a life chicken would need, everything it has. Now, I'm not going to get into that for now because I don't feel very engaged in that. But then, like bread is needed, every spiritual person needs the Holy Spirit and that on a daily basis. For the energy in our spirit being, for the energy in our spirit man, we need the Holy Spirit. If we do not have the Holy Spirit, then we slowly start to weaken in our spirit man. And this is a problem many of us Christians have. Oh, yes, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, maybe earlier on, we were saved and we have the power of the Holy Spirit. We have the residing spirit on the inside of us. Praise God for that. But then we forget the dimension that, like a child needs bread on a daily basis and that many times a day, we as the children of God, as spiritual persons, we need the Holy Spirit on a daily basis and that many times a day. When you get up in the morning, we should ask the Lord, "Father, give me the Holy Spirit." When we come through the noon, don't forget, "Lord, I still need the Holy Spirit." And in the evening, "Father, I still need the Holy Spirit." Like, what? Do you really do that? Yes, we need to do that. In a few minutes, I'll come to verse number one of the same chapter. But let's come back to this for some time now again. Now, many times what happens is, I need the Holy Spirit. And sometimes when I don't, from the words of the Lord Jesus, it is simple, very simple. If we ask, we receive. On the flip side, if we do not ask, we just do not receive. Point blank. Hallelujah. You ask, you receive; you don't ask, you don't receive. And the onus is on us to ask for the Holy Spirit on a daily basis. Hallelujah. On a daily basis. Which if we do not ask, the problem is, we do not receive. And if we do not receive, on the first level, I would think that my spirit starts to go weak and weak by the day and weak by the hour. Slowly, my spirit man becomes so weak that I don't have the spiritual strength to do many other things. And I've seen, I've come across people who have not been in this discipleship, so to say. Discipleship, don't forget that word. I'm coming back to that because that word is the key in this aspect. They have not been asking for the Holy Spirit. And so slowly, the spiritual man is dying. And when the spirit man dies, there is a carnal nature that takes over. Just because we do not ask for the Holy Spirit on a daily basis, and let me put myself on the spot. You know what? I'm a pastor. Why would I want to ask for the Holy Spirit on a daily basis? I have the Holy Spirit on the inside of me. Well, I can preach, I can teach, I can prophesy, I can cast out demons, I can do everything. Yes, that is all true. But the Bible very clearly says, "Just as strong we are spiritually, yet on a daily basis, we need to ask for the Holy Spirit." Even before I came into this meeting, maybe I can, you know, maybe I can buy the virtue of my being in the ministry for a very long time. Maybe I could just speak what I have to speak because of my experience in the ministry. Yeah. But if, when I speak, if I have to be speaking in the spirit, I need the Holy Spirit. Otherwise, slowly, I shift from my spiritual person to being a, if not a carnal person, at least a natural man. Yeah. So I can teach because, oh, from very long ago, maybe about 40 years, I've been speaking the word. From my very childhood, I've been speaking the word. Just by the virtue of my speaking from the word for so long, I can just teach and preach and speak. And nobody even recognizes that I've shifted from my spirit realm into my natural man or my carnal nature. And nobody even knows that. And so it's very important for me that before every meeting, before I speak to every person, before I minister to any person, forget ministering, before I do anything in my life, if I do not ask for the Spirit to be given to me, the Spirit is not given to me. And if I do not operate in the Holy Spirit, then I operate in my carnal nature or as a very natural man. If that happens, it's very dangerous. Can I hear an amen? Amen, yes. So He says, "If you then, evil as you are, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will the heavenly Father give the Holy Spirit to those who ask? And continue to ask him." It's a very, the Amplified Bible in its translation is so very clear. It says, "You ask him," that's wonderful, "continue to ask him." Not just on a daily basis, many times a day. You know, I'm in the pastoral ministry and so many parents come to me and say, "Pastor, pray for my children." It's what happened? Oh, their appetite is not good, they're not eating food. I've never seen a father come and tell me, "Please pray that my son stops eating." Just as much as they eat, that's okay. But they are happy when their children eat more. I mean, when their appetite is normal. So the Holy Spirit needs to be, you know, we need to hunger and thirst for the Holy Spirit. Sometimes it so happens that we do not know how to receive the Holy Spirit on a daily basis like this. Let me just come back to this. Number one, ask, and that is a discipline. If you come to verse number one, this is, you know, in the same that we find in the Gospel according to Saint Matthew and chapter number seven, we find the same part of this. It says, "Then he was praying in a certain place." This is talking about the Lord Jesus. The Lord Jesus was praying in a certain place. And when he stopped, when he stopped the activity of prayer, one of his disciples said to him, "Lord, teach us to pray, just as John taught his disciples." Now, what is happening here? We must understand that the Lord Jesus is not teaching prayer to everybody else. He's teaching the key aspects of prayer to his disciples. Now, from verse number two, whatever we find again in the Gospel according to Saint Matthew in a more elaborate form, we find it here, which I may actually touch the prayer. But this is a prayer of a disciple. Last evening, we were sharing in another meeting and I was talking about the different levels of Christian faith. I was saying that, you know, on the first level, we have people who love the Lord Jesus. And if you think that's very natural, please believe me, it's not. We really love Him because He first loved us. If you think it's our virtue that we love Him, you got it wrong. We love Him just because of the fact that He loved us. When I tell you a story, maybe you will figure out. Yesterday, I did this, I did tell this story. I was telling the story of a man by name Pallini in our church. He's from a Tamil-speaking background. And he was telling his testimony. He was saying about how he came to the church. He was a drunkard. And by the way, not just that he did not love Jesus, he hated Jesus. Yeah, you heard it right, he hated Jesus. His logic was, listen, this man who can't save himself from those soldiers who killed him, nailed him to the cross, he just couldn't save himself. And he has the audacity to say that I will save the world? He couldn't save himself, and how can he save me? I don't like this man. And he honestly, quote-unquote, his words, he hated the Lord Jesus. And then he said, one day, he was contemplating suicide and he tried to hang himself to death. And just before he tried to hang himself to death, he said, "If there is a living God, I want you to reveal yourself to me." And he said, he has no clue what happened. He fell right behind, he couldn't hang himself to death. He fell behind and his head hit the wall and he fell unconscious. He was there for some long time. And while he was there on the floor, he said, he saw a vision. And in the vision, the word Bethel was written, the word Bethel. And he had no clue to what this was, but this stuck to his mind. And he had no clue to what this Bethel was all about. Then the coming days, he spoke to his neighbors who happened to be believers. He said, "I got a terrible headache, I don't know what to do." And they said, "You do one thing, you come with us to the church. Our pastors will pray for you and you'll be healed." He said, "I don't like going to a church. I don't like this Jesus stuff and I don't want to go to a church." They said, "But for your healing, maybe you want to come along." He came and when he came to the church, he saw that was written there, Bethel. He said, "Hey, this is the thing that I saw when I was down." And that's how he happened to come to Bethel. And well, he's an evangelist in our church now. To cut the story short, well, one thing I want to tell you is, all people don't just love Jesus. Thank God that He has given us the privilege to love the Lord Jesus. It's a great privilege. All right, can all be lovers of the Lord Jesus? But that is not the final thing. Come on, move on from there. From there, we need to be actually not just lovers of Jesus, not that we don't, we need to be lovers of the Lord Jesus. The Lord Jesus should never say, "This one thing I have against you in that you have lost your first love." We need to love the Lord Jesus. I'm not playing down that, okay. We need to love the Lord Jesus and let Him be the first love of our life. Going further on from there, we need to actually believe in the Lord Jesus. I was speaking to this girl who was a scientist who was going to Russia. And she told me this, "I love the Lord Jesus." And actually, if you ask me, I even believe in Him. But not like what you guys speak. I believe that He was a good guy, He was a historical person. I believe that He lived, He died, all that apart. But I don't believe the stuff that you talk about Him. Well, the Bible very clearly says, "If you believe in Him even as the scriptures have told, then out of your belly shall flow rivers of living water." We all believe in the Lord Jesus. Hallelujah. But we need to believe exactly as the scriptures tell. That is where some of us are in big deep trouble because some of us have no clue to what the Bible says. Of course, we know He died, He rose again from among the dead. We know so many things as much as we know, praise God for that. But we need to go much, way, much deeper into understanding what the Bible talks about the Lord Jesus. And as we start to know deeper things about the Lord Jesus and believe exactly as the scriptures speak, then the Bible says, "Out of our belly shall flow rivers of living water." From lovers of the Lord Jesus, we graduate to being believers in the Lord Jesus. Well, that's not stagnation there, it's not a love. We need to go further on. From being believers, we need to be followers of the Lord Jesus. Oh, my goodness, that's not easy at all. It's easier to believe than to be followers. Because the Lord Jesus said, "If you really want to follow me, come on." Number one, deny yourself and then take up your cross and follow me. Some of us need to come to that place where we can really deny ourselves. What does it mean to deny ourselves? It's very well reflected in the prayer of our Lord Jesus. He said this very simply and clearly. He said, "Lord, if it's possible, please remove this cup away from me." You remember that prayer in Gethsemane? He said that. "If possible," oh, my goodness, he had the audacity to say that. Can you think of, the eternal plan of God, from the eternity past through the coming eternity, the entire plan of God for the entire mankind. And the Lord Jesus prays against that. "If it's possible, remove this cup from me." And the Father was not upset with the Lord Jesus for that. But He added on this and He denied Himself and said, "Well, it's not as I desire, but let your will be done." The Lord is never against us asking our desires. He doesn't fight against our individuality and our desires and our likes. But then He said, "If you really want to follow me, deny yourself." You have all the freedom to ask all that you want to ask. But there's an overriding statement that says, "But if it's not important that you answer my prayer, what is your will, let that be done." Unless we are able to deny ourselves and unless we are able to take up the cross, we just cannot be followers. I pray that we will be greater followers of the Lord Jesus. But followers of the Lord Jesus, it's good that we are followers of the Lord Jesus. But the Bible says, from there, we need to graduate all the more farther to be the disciples of the Lord Jesus. A disciple is way beyond lover of the Lord Jesus. A disciple is way beyond a follower of the Lord Jesus. A disciple is way beyond a believer in the Lord Jesus. A disciple is a person who is so disciplined to be a disciple. Hallelujah. And this prayer is not for the lovers of the Lord Jesus. This is not for those who believe in the Lord Jesus. These are not even for followers of the Lord Jesus. This is a disciple's prayer that the Lord Jesus is teaching his disciples. And I may be like, you know what? I'm a pastor. I can preach, I can teach, I can cast out demons. I can pray for the sick, I can heal the sick. I can do that, I can do this. Well, I'm living a victorious Christian life. Well, come on, go forward. Be a disciple of the Lord Jesus. And again, I'm coming back to this. Last evening, I was mentioning this. Why is it important that we be disciples of the Lord Jesus? Because when the Lord Jesus is born in our hearts, when we are born again, we enter into the kingdom of God. But then, the Lord Jesus Christ, how many of us here believe that the Lord Jesus Christ is going to come back again? Did I see all the hands? Hallelujah. It beats logic, it beats comprehension. But beyond our logic and comprehension, the Bible says it and I believe in, that the Lord Jesus Christ is coming back again to take away His church, His bride. I believe that, I believe that, I believe that. And I thank God for those of us who have the faith that was once for our handed over, for which we have to contend. And I pray that beyond every logic, beyond every rationale, beyond every human understanding and comprehension, we rise up to a place where we will be able to believe that the Lord Jesus Christ is coming back again. That's the faith that's for once handed over to us. Well, when the Lord Jesus Christ comes back again, you know, the Bible spoke about 750, close around, around, I'm not seeing the exact numbers, about 750 times about the virgin birth of the Lord Jesus. Starting from the book of Genesis, when He says, "The seed of the woman shall tread the seed of the serpent, and shall crush the seed of the serpent." Starting from there, there are over, really close to 750 prophecies about the virgin birth of the Lord Jesus. And if all of that came to pass, that has almost doubled that time when the Bible says that He will come again. Hallelujah. If the Lord Jesus came, and it's easy for us to believe that the Lord Jesus came in through a virgin called Mary and that He lived a sinless life, that He died for our sins, that He rose again from among the dead. And then the Bible very clearly says that He's going to come back again. And when He comes back again, He's not coming back for the kingdom. He's coming back for His church. When we are born again, we enter the kingdom of God. But then, the Lord Jesus is coming back for His bride, that is the church. And who is the bride? Who's the church? Let me put it in this way, the disciples are the bride and the church of the Lord Jesus. That is why it's so important to understand this one scripture in that perspective. The Lord Jesus is teaching his disciples on how to pray. And then it goes on. It's not for a pastor, it's not for evangelist, it's not for a title, it's not for a person who may take pride in calling that person even as a leader of a church congregation, so to say. But then, the Lord Jesus is talking about His bride. The Lord Jesus is talking about His church. He says, "If you want to be a disciple, I want to teach you our disciples' prayer." It goes on through that prayer, which I don't think I'm going to get into much of, that prayer for this evening. But anyways, let me just, it says, "Our Father, who is in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come; your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread." Do you know, the quality of a disciple is daily trust in the Lord. Each one of us, we have sufficient food and it's there in our refrigerator for maybe next week or next maybe one month in our deep freezers. But in spite of the fact that we have sufficient, the Lord Jesus was not ignorant of the fact that we will live in a lifetime of sufficiency. And even to the disciples He was speaking to, maybe they had sufficient food for the next day or maybe for the next week. I don't know how it was then. But definitely He knew about us, where we would never have lack of food. We have sufficient stored up. But then He said, "Listen, a disciple is someone who learns on how to depend and trust in the Father for your daily bread." I'm not just talking about food, but daily provision. Did we pray this morning or did we pray today for our daily provision? It'll reflect on how much of a disciple we are. Hallelujah. If I'm like, yeah, thank you, Lord, I've got everything that I need. I really thank you for that. Maybe we're a good lover of the Lord Jesus, love the Lord for what He has done for us. Hallelujah. And if you're like, "Lord, I thank you." Maybe you're a follower, maybe you're a good believer. I believe that you have done all this. I believe that you will do it tomorrow for me. But when it comes to pure trust, it reflects that we are disciple of the Lord Jesus. I'm praying that some of us will graduate from being, wherever we are, to be disciples on a daily basis. That's a discipline. That's the discipline. A disciple is one who is disciplined to practice things on a consistent basis, on a daily basis. Till we come to that place where we are able to do things on a daily basis consistently, it's very challenging to call ourselves a disciple. In our spiritual disciplines, in our personal prayer time, in our personal attitudes and in our personal reflections, just as much as we are not able to do it on a daily basis, it's a challenge to qualify us as disciples. He says, "Your trust..." He says, your trust, your attitude, and that not just on the inside of your heart, but actually vocalizing it. Says, give us daily our bread, give us this day our daily bread. I need my bread from you. I vocalize, I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to trust in you so much that I'm willing to ask and that on a daily basis. Yes, I know that I have sufficient for today, I know I have sufficient for tomorrow. I'm not in dread, I'm not in lack, I don't lack it, but Lord, I'm not reflecting the dread or the lack. But what I'm asking is, I pray that my trust in you will be way more deepened than where I am now. My vocalization, I verbalize it, I need the bread on a daily basis. Give us this day our daily bread. Verse number four, it says, forgive us our debts as we forgive everyone who's indebted to us, who has offended us or done us wrong, the attitudes of a disciple. Hallelujah. And it goes on to say, bring us not into temptation, bring us not into temptation. You know, as a pastor, as a believer, as a leader, we all ought to have our accountability systems. I have definite accountability systems in my church. When it comes to administration, when it comes to practices, when it comes to different things, I have definite accountability systems. Well, it's very important. I, I, I was, recently, we were in the Billy Graham headquarters in North Carolina. And I was so fascinated to go through the, the kind of protocols that he left, you know? It was very fascinating. As a leader who remained beyond reproach, above reproach, how he maintained this lifestyle. Well, he had tremendous systems of accountability and transparency. Praise God for that. We must all develop that. With due respect to that, on the flip side, it says, in spite of us having that, says, you must learn to depend on the Lord and to ask him on this day, bring us not to temptation, lead us not into temptation. I have seen in my life, I have witnessed in my life, that every time I prayed that prayer, the Lord has been very merciful to me. If somebody is going through challenging times and if you think that the temptations are getting over you, if you think that the strong winds of temptations are fighting you really hard, I want you to come to a place where you will pray, Lord, lead us not into temptation. Let me assure you, you will see the faithful hand of the Lord. That day, I've seen in my life, maybe I don't know how far I can go to testify of this, but every time I have prayed that prayer and the Lord has been so merciful that the circumstances are controlled divinely, orchestrated divinely, in so much that I've been kept safe. I've come to a place where on a daily basis, I have to say, Lord, all my systems, all the things that I've put in place for as a leader, as a minister of the gospel, as a pastor, as, 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 as a responsible person, everything that I have put in place for me to keep myself safe, thank you for everything. On the, on the other hand, I pray that you will keep me safe from temptation, lead me not into temptation. As disciples, we need to pray that on a daily basis. Hallelujah. We do not depend on our own strength, we don't depend on our own efforts, we don't depend upon our, our own self. We trust in the Lord. Say, Lord, lead us not into temptation. And then it says, deliver us from the evil one. And some of us think deliverance prayers, we think are supposed to happen once in a while. Can I tell you, deliverance is something that needs to happen on a daily basis. We wait sometimes for the evil, for the, for the different things, for the demonic, for the witchcraft, for the accident, for the sickness, for the disease, or whatever bondage is sin and temptations, whatever. We sometimes think that once we are so crushed, sometimes when we are so beneath the power of these things, that we need deliverance. Jesus taught us as a disciple, it's our duty to pray every day that we'll be delivered from the evil one. Don't wait for the accident to happen, don't wait for the sickness to happen, don't wait for the enemy to come in. But before the bondage comes and pray, Lord, deliver us from the evil one. Hallelujah. In the book of the Gospel According to Saint Matthew, we have way much deeper things that it talks about how we ought to pray. I'm not going to that place, but let's come back to this. It says, as a disciple, there are certain things that we have to pray. Now, let's come back to another aspect of the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit, as much as it's portrayed to us as a loaf of bread, especially in this scripture portion, the Holy Spirit is also, uh, also portrayed to us as a person. And as we go looking at the word in the Holy Bible, the Lord Jesus says, he's, you know, the first one part in the gospel, he says, I will send to you the Comforter. And does anybody know the, uh, the word that the Lord Jesus used when it talks about the Comforter? He goes on to say, sorry, the Helper, yep, but the, the root word. Sorry? There is a, there's a Greek word that we use. Counselor is the translation, counselor, helper, uh, then the Comforter. There are, there are at least seven different translations for that one word. When he comes. Okay, I'll come back to that word. But then, as we go further down, it talks about how we must have fellowship with the Holy Spirit. That he says, is the coignonia of the Holy Spirit. That we need to have the fellowship of the Holy Spirit, the coignonia of the Holy Spirit. When he comes, when the person of the Holy Spirit comes. In the initial part of it, we have the Holy Spirit's power, we have the working of the Holy Spirit. But then, there are certain things that is not given to us, there are certain things that are granted to us. I want to come to that now, very quickly. You know, in the, in the, in the Bible, there are certain things that is given to us just for the asking. Ask and you will receive. But certain things, it's not given on asking, it is granted to us. Let me just try and help you understand this. I'll maybe put in an illustration so that the idea is conveyed clearly, then I'll come to the scriptures. Now, I'm here in Australia. And just in case, we had an officer here who was authorized to issue a passport. And I come to you and say, sir, I need an Australian passport. As much as you love me, as much as you respect me, will you be able to give me a passport? No. If I ask you for a pen, you'll be like, you take the pen, I don't even need it back. But if I ask you for a passport, asking does not, uh, qualify me for receiving. Because it just cannot be given, it has to be granted. On the first hand, I need to qualify for it. I need to be an Australian citizen. Then, there is a process. I have to, I have to, I have to go through a process where I have to give an application and then the verification happens, the police verification, I don't know how it's in India, I, I, how it's here, but in India, I know how it works. Then it's delivered to your postal address. There is a system, there is a protocol. That is how it is given. It just cannot be given, it is granted. Even in the Bible, there are certain things that is given, given to anybody who asks, but there are also certain things that cannot be just given, it has to be granted. For example, in the book of, uh, the Epistle According to James, it says, if any of you lacks wisdom, what should you do? Ask and it shall be given. Just ask, it shall be given. It's for the asking, just you ask and it shall be given. But then slowly, when you come into the epistles again, it says, may the Lord grant you the spirit of wisdom. Wisdom is given for the asking, but the spirit of wisdom needs to be granted. It just cannot be given to anybody. In the same way, the Holy Spirit, initially, the Lord Jesus himself said, you ask and it will be given to you. But then slowly, the Bible comes to say, hey, there are certain dimensions of the Holy Spirit that is not just given for the asking, but it has to be granted to you. The coignonia, the fellowship of the Holy Spirit is not just for the asking, it is only given as a grant to them who qualify and who go through the procedure. Hallelujah. So, I'm, I'm coming to a place, not even going to that place in the scriptures where we need to, where we need to be granted the things of the Spirit, but I'm coming back to those places where we just ask. Lord, you said, you ask and the Spirit, Holy Spirit will be given. But then you say, you wait and the power of the Holy Spirit will be given? Wait till you're endued with power from on high? Couple of chapters, hey, I just happened to read that you ask, and if you being evil know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more shall the heavenly Father give the Holy Spirit to those who ask? And I'm asking you for the Holy Spirit. And now suddenly you say, you wait till you're endued with power from on high? How does it reconcile? On the one hand, you're saying, just ask and you being evil know how to give good gifts to your children? How much more will the heavenly Father give the Holy Spirit to them who ask? And now you say, hey, wait a minute, asking is not just sufficient. You have to wait till you are endued with power from on high, till the Holy Spirit comes upon you. And going down deeper into the scriptures, it just says, even waiting is not sufficient. You have to come to a place where you qualify and there are certain things that you have to go through so that the coignonia, the fellowship of the Holy Spirit is granted to you. Hallelujah. For tonight, I would like to just remain in a place where we have to ask for the Holy Spirit and that on a daily basis. Because if we do not, then slowly, number one, our spiritual energy starts to go down. Our Christian energy starts to grow down, go down. We have seen people who have been in the faith for so long, so very long, so very long, so very long. But you ask them, do you have the spiritual power? They do not have the spiritual energy, they do not have the spiritual motivation, they do not have the spiritual life. Why? Because somewhere along the line, they have lost asking the bread. I think they get bread on a Sunday morning when they come to the church. Or maybe, I'm not talking about the word of God as the bread, that of course, yes, on a daily basis, we read the word, that is good. But then the Bible teaches us that we must ask for the Holy Spirit on a daily basis. And slowly, we come to a place where our spiritual energy is drained. And you know what, for me at least, let me put it this way, I'm trying to help you understand this. Now, I'm going to preach from the word and I don't have the Holy Spirit. You know what happens? I just don't collapse. When my spirit being just shuts down, when my spirit realm just shuts down, slowly, my mind, my natural man takes over. Says like, hey, you've been preaching for the last so many years, you know how to preach, you know how to speak. You start to preach on a natural realm. And when you start to speak on a natural realm, it's not the spirit that ministers, it's the flesh and the mind that starts to minister. And so, the spirit life is slowly dying down. Tonight, I want to tell you this, that there is a newness that's coming our way. I believe that the Lord is going to hand over the weapon of the Holy Spirit to some of them who are going to say, Lord, I rise up in my spirit again on a daily basis. I want to come to that place of discipleship, where I will come to a place where I will say, Lord, I need to be a disciple, where I will need your Holy Spirit. I pray that I'll be given the power of the Holy Spirit. I pray that I'll be given the Spirit on a daily basis so that I live in my spirit and I will do great things for you. Tonight, I think I'm going to come to that place where the, I believe that certain gifts are going to be handed over to the church, certain gifts of the Holy Spirit. Some of us are called to do the ministry of the gospel. I sense that some of us here are called in this church, in this empowered nation's church. I believe some of us are called to do the work of the ministry. I pray that some of us will have that power that when you stretch your hands and the sick will be healed. I don't know who I'm speaking to, but in my spirit, I know there are some of us, the Lord has been telling you that you have to, you have to practice the gift of healing. And tonight, I'm telling you, some of us are going to take that weapon in your hands and you're going to say, Lord, when I reach out my hands, there are going to be people who are going to be healed. Can I hear an amen, please? I know this, you know, in my church, I have certain people who have come into the church because of what happened in their life. Let me tell you this, a small little incident. There was this man, I'm not going to take his name because we are online and I think some of us even from Bangalore could be watching, I do not know, but that's okay. I don't want to put it on records at this point of time. But, you know, he was, uh, he was not a believer, he was not in the church. And somebody, my, my dad, to be precise, he went there to buy something from this shop. And when he's, when he purchased the thing and when his hand touched that shopkeeper's hand, there was such a power surge that went into him. That day onwards, he started coming to the church. It's about twenty-five, thirty years that man is a member of our church. One touch. Hallelujah. I believe such kind of things are going to happen. When you give a shake hand, that is going to be the power that will flood out, flood out from you. And that's not because of something great that we have done, but because we have come to a place of discipleship. On a daily basis, we ask, Lord, fill me with your Holy Spirit, give me the Holy Spirit so that by your Holy Spirit I will work. And let me tell you, your life will never be the same again. You will start to be the ministers of the gospel. Hallelujah. I pray that when we stretch our hands, when we shake hands, there'll be some people who will be healed and they will know that there is a child of God, there is a man of God, there is a person of, uh, who is, who's serving the Lord. And through the touch, some of us are going to minister the gift of the Holy Spirit. I believe some of us are going to get into a realm of dreams and visions and the sensitivity of the spirit will be so high that we'll be people who will walk in the spirit. In a, in a, you know, in, in this, in this, in this culture, which is so very postmodern culture, I sense that people are losing spirituality in the church, but the world is preparing for a domination by spiritual insight. Why do I mean, what do I mean, what do I mean? Let me just try to highlight this for you. You know, when the church has lost its spiritual cutting edge, the world is preparing. And I see, the other day, we were having a service in Brisbane and that was in a school library. And I saw the kind of books the children were exposed to. Starting from Harry Potter to the so many different things, where the children are taught on how to dabble with the things of the spiritual realm. They're taught on how to deal with the things of the spiritual realm. The church has lost the cutting edge. And if there's anything, we think that's superstition. We have no clue to understand the dynamics of the spiritual realm. Whereas the world is raising up a young generation that is getting dabbling into the things of the spiritual realm. Let me tell you, the church has to rise up again, come to a spiritual domination in the mighty name of Jesus. Let there be changes in the atmosphere, let the dominion of the enemy come down in the mighty name of Jesus. Let people with authority and spiritual insight and spiritual power rise up. Let the people with spiritual equip, who are equipped with the things of the spirit, rise up in the spiritual realm. I believe that my, our coming to this city, the city of Perth, I pray will change certain situations. There'll be people who will rise up in the spirit. I don't think that that will be limited to a small little group of people, but I believe a generation will rise up from this city in Perth, where people will rise up with spiritual dynamics, with spiritual insights, with spiritual understanding, with spiritual giftings, with spiritual vision, that they will be able to handle the things of the spiritual realm. And they will dethrone the principalities and powers and they will come up powerfully in the spiritual realm. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. I'm inspired, I'm, I was not even planning to tell this, but I'm inspired to say certain things. Let me tell you this. We were speaking, we were having a small little prayer group. Our prayer group, and suddenly I saw a vision. I see, I see a vision where there is a huge big tent, you know, a tent. And I said to my prayer partners, I'm seeing a huge tent and the whale is not removed. I'm not able to understand what that is. And we said, okay, let's pray that the Lord will remove the whale. And sometime as we are praying in the spirit, as we started to pray in the, in the Holy Spirit in tongues, there was an angel that came and removed the whale. And I saw so much of ammunition there, so much of ammunition. And I started to pray, I said, I see not just weapons, but ammunition stacked up, so much of it. And we asked, started to ask the Lord, what is it? And then the Lord revealed and said, the certain community, which I'm not going to name now, it's a very sensitive issue, a certain community rising up in their spiritual attack against the church, against the Christian community, is trying to bring in sicknesses and diseases into the Christian community. Because of its very sensitive nature, I'm going to keep it very low lying, so just babble with me. I'm not going to get into the details. And so, we started to pray in the spirit. We asked, Lord, how do we deal with it? The Holy Spirit spoke to us to pray for the protection of the Christian community. And we prayed. And two to three months down the, down the line, what do we see? We see that the community that actually we saw in the vision, that was gearing up to, to bring in such a powerful assault against the church of the Lord Jesus in the city, we saw that same community going through terrible, uh, sickness and disease. Unseen until then, unseen till then. We realized something, that the weapons that were fashioned against the church was unleashed back again into the enemy camp. What happened? There was somebody who stood in the gap and rose up, and the church did not go down. Why am I telling this? I'm not even, I was not even planning to tell you this, but this came up in my spirit. I want to tell you, some of us are going to have dreams and visions that will go give us deep insight into the stratagem of the enemy, that will give us a deep understanding about how the enemy is planning to attack the church and the body of the Lord Jesus. And you will rise up in your spirit. Maybe the world doesn't recognize you, maybe your face is not featured in any newspaper, it doesn't matter, who cares? But just as much as the Lord is using you to stand up in the gap for the church, for the city, for the people of God, for the families, for the generations. And when the enemy is trying to come in like a flood and steal away our children from the church, from the hands of the Lord, from the ministry, let us stand up and raise up a standard and say, no, we will not allow you to step into our church, step into our community, to step into our children, but we will rise up as warriors because the Lord has been revealing what he wants to do in the church. I'm seeing that the Lord is going to release the revelation into some of us. Hallelujah. I've seen that the Lord is going to release the weapons into the hands of some of us here for spiritual domination, because... I was in Australia one year ago. And I was, in my dream, in a vision, I saw a huge big structure, a steel structure. I had no clue to what it was. And then in the morning, I get up and I speak to the person who was hosting me, this was in Canberra. I said, I see a structure like this. I drew, I, I took a piece of paper, I took a pen, and I drew this. This is the structure that I see, a triangle structure. And I see a flag of such and such color come and drape up this entire thing. In less than five years, this is what is going to happen to this nation. There'll be a dramatic change in the demography, there'll be a dramatic change in the culture, there'll be a dramatic change even in the laws of this land. And they were like, well, we have no clue to what it is. And the same day, we happened to go to the National Parliament, just a visit. And when I saw the parliament, I said, what is that stuff on right up above there? The triangle stuff? Said, that was the thing that I saw, that was the thing that I drew up for them. Said, oh yes, this is what we saw. I said, five years down the line, if it's not at this, the demography of this nation, the laws of this nation, so many areas of this nation are going to be very badly affected. And it'll come against the body of Christ and the kingdom of God in this nation. We had a very small prayer, I don't claim anything, but we had a small little prayer, and I saw in the, less than one year's time, what has hap- what has been happening in this nation. Some of us may not even be aware of what's been happening, because it's not been highlighted. We all know what's been happening, but maybe it's not highlighted. Let me tell you, the Lord will empower some of you to, to, uh, to, um, to, 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 to take away the whale from certain things, to reveal certain things, and to defrone certain principalities. And you will be people who will establish the kingdom of God in this nation. Hallelujah. I pray that that empowerment, I pray that that gifting of the Holy Spirit will come into us. That is my prayer. And we must pray on a daily basis, Lord, give me your Holy Spirit, Lord, give me your Holy Spirit, Lord, give me your Holy Spirit. I'm not putting down the power, I'm not putting down the importance, I'm not putting down the, the place of the fellowship of the Holy Spirit and the giftings of the Holy Spirit. But for tonight, the power of the Holy Spirit has inspired me to tell this, that we must be people who on a daily basis will come to a place where we'll ask for the Holy Spirit to be given to us. Theology says, ask the Father. Of, of course, we, we have fellowship with the Holy Spirit, we communicate with the Holy Spirit. I'm not saying it's wrong, because you cannot have fellowship without communicating, but for the granting of the koinonia or for the giving of the Holy Spirit, the teachings of the Bible is very plain, we must ask the Father, and the Father will give to you the Holy Spirit. The Father will grant to you the power of the Holy Spirit, and the Father will grant to you the koinonia of the Holy Spirit. Hallelujah. For tonight, I want to keep it as, as simple as that, as straight as that. Ask for the Holy Spirit consistently. Ask on a daily basis. Ask many times a day. Those who ask and continue to ask, the Father is willing to give the Holy Spirit. Hallelujah. And as he gives you the Holy Spirit, the gifts of the Holy Spirit will start to come in. The authority of the Holy Spirit will start to come in, the power of the Holy Spirit will start to come in, the working of the Holy Spirit will start to come in, the deep experiences of the Holy Spirit will start to come in, in the mighty name of Jesus, from one end of this hall to the other end of this hall, through every person, irrespective of the gender, irrespective of the age, irrespective of qualifications, irrespective of any factor, in the mighty name of Jesus, to those of us who are open to receiving the power of the Holy Spirit, to those of us who are willing to receive the gifts of the Holy Spirit, to those of us who are desperate, desperately seeking for the Holy Spirit. If you lift up your voice and say, Father, I need the Holy Spirit, give me the Holy Spirit. I pray that this, as disciples, we will come to a place where the Lord will take you and use you, where he will empower you, where he will use you to dethrone the principalities, where he will use you to establish the kingdom of God. That day is coming, that days are coming, the days are coming, when you will be empowered, when we, when you will be honorable vessels in the hands of the Lord. You will be vessels of honor, where he will put out his glory, where he will put out his power, and you will be used by the Lord to do his marvelous works. From different parts of the world, I know many people from different parts of my nation where I come from. You've been brought here, and that is not without purpose, that is not without purpose. You're here for a purpose, you are here with a purpose. You're here to establish the kingdom of God through your words, through your prayers, through your intercessions, through your works, through your touch, through your presence, through your words. Hallelujah, I believe, I believe. Maybe you will not do anything dramatic in one day, but I know that on the shows of glory, the Lord will reward you for your faithfulness in that you are available in his hands to do his work as powerful weapons. I know some of you are being, uh, being transformed into what the Lord wants you to be. Hallelujah. In the mighty name of Jesus, in the mighty name of Jesus. I'm going to spend a few minutes in prayer, and I pray that if you're open, hallelujah, if you open your mouth wide, if you open your mouth wide. I'm not just talking about making some noise, I'm not just talking about lifting up your voice, I'm talking about your receptivity, I'm talking about your attitudes, I'm talking about your holy desperation. And if you say, Lord, I need that Holy Spirit, I need that power, I need the gifts of the Spirit, I need to be used by you. Here I am, Lord, take me, Lord, I'm available, take me, Lord, here I am, use me, Lord. Let me tell you, you will be used by the Lord, because he is seeking for vessels. He's seeking for people who will be malleable in his hands, who will be available in his hands, who will be powerful instruments in his hands. And tonight, I make this declaration, in the mighty name of Jesus, for the kingdom of God to be established in this land, for the kingdom of God to be established in this land, for the kingdom of God to be established in the land. Every principality that needs to be dethroned, every principality and power that needs to be cast out, in the mighty name of Jesus, through dreams and visions, through the ministries of the Holy Spirit, through the powerful demonstration of the working of the Holy Spirit. Some of us will come out, I pray, Lord, I pray, Lord, I pray, Lord, that in the coming days, some of us, as weak as we may seem, as helpless as we may seem, but in the mighty name of Jesus, we will become powerful instruments, we will become powerful weapons in your hands, whom you will use. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Let there be revival in this land, let there be revival in this land. And some of us who were totally helpless, clueless, who had no clue to what you wanted to do, in the mighty name of Jesus, let them rise up as powerful people. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Come on, go on, go on, go on, start to praise the Lord, start to lift up your voice, start to seek the Lord's face. In the mighty name of Jesus, in a postmodern world, let revival speak, let revival sweep, let revival take over. Let people come in droves, let people come in into the church, let people come into the kingdom.